Good evening. This is the February 26th, two Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item One, 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item Two, 2012-04, Storybook Homes. Item Three, 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item Four, 2009, Ephesus Realty. Item Five, 773 Scholar Estates. Item Six, 1092 Winston's Run. Item Seven, 1139 Jenna Court. Item Eight, 280A Olivia Estates. Under Part Two, Item Nine, 2010-06, KVC Holding. Item Ten, Case 911A Glen Hill Northern. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on any of the items which were just read which the Planning Department is requesting be adjourned?
Thank you.
Hearing none? A motion, please.
Motion to adjourn items one through 10 as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. Man is adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item 11, is an extension of conditional final approval for Samantha Estates 1123. The applicant is requesting a 90-day retroactive extension of the conditional final approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of posting the performance bond and filing the MAP. The MAP of Samantha Estates 1123 was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on May 5th, 2010. The Board granted the applicant eight retroactive 90-day extensions of the final approval on April 3rd that expired on May 5th, 2013. On May 2nd, 2013, the Board granted an additional 90-day extension to expire on August 5th. On August 21st, the Board granted the applicant an additional 90-day extension to expire on November 5th. And what may be missing from your memo is on October 6th, the Board granted an additional 90-day extension which expired on February 5th, 2014. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request. I should note at a separate hearing that the applicant will need to request extensions of the Planning Board's performance bond approval. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a 90-day retroactive extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as MAP of Samantha Estates 1123, beginning February 5th, 2014, through May 5th, 2014.
Okay. Good evening, sir. Are you here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Steve D'Agostino, 40 Franciscan Lane, Smithtown, New York.
Did you hear the review read by the Planning Department and the proposed resolution that they're recommending that we pass?
Yes.
You in agreement with it?
Yes.
Okay. Have any questions at this point?
No. I have the F. David of posting for this.
You want to hand it over to Mr. Rubio, please?
We have this. Read the sentence.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard on this application of Samantha Estates? None? Any questions from any members of the board for the applicant's representative?
There's been several extensions prior. Is there any particular complexity or any reason for the ongoing delay?
We're still waiting for the consent forms to be signed by the banks from the sellers of the property. Everything else was submitted. Performance bond, all the park fees and all the other paperwork. We have Board of Health approvals and that's the only thing we're waiting on right now.
Do you have any idea when that might be done?
We're in touch with them and the seller's attorney and they keep, you know, I don't know what the holdup is. It's the banks on the seller's part right now.
All right. Thank you.
Any other question?
Yeah, you've mentioned you do have Board of Health approval?
We do.
Okay.
We have Board of Health approvals.
So you're not waiting on any other supplemental agency?
We're not waiting on anything. Everything is submitted. No other agencies. That's it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And all that paperwork was submitted. It's all submitted to the Planning Department.
Okay.
Including the performance bond and all the park fees.
Okay. All right. We need a motion, please.
In the matter of Samantha Estates Number 1123, motion to adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. The resolution is adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item under the agenda is under Part Three, Item 12, is a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals concerning the final subdivision application of MAP of Core at Kings Park Number 1157. The applicant is requesting final approval to subdivide a .8685 acre parcel into two single-family lots. In order to construct the subdivision, a variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals to include environmentally sensitive lands in the minimum lot area is required. Before the BZA can act, it is required by Section 2776 of Town Law to consider the Planning Board's comments to the BZA. The subject property is comprised from one tax lot that is trapezoidal in shape, and you have an additional aerial of that in your packet as well. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the .8685 acre parcel into two single-family lots. The property fronts diagonally on Core Road with 150-foot feet of road frontage. The proposal is divide the lot in half into two approximately 68-foot wide lots and construct two homes. The site is surrounded by property zone R15. While the proposal appears to meet the lot area requirements for single-family residences in an R15, the property contains environmentally sensitive lands in the form of slopes greater than 15 percent. In calculating the amount of buildable lot area for a particular parcel, all ESL must be excluded when determining yield. Lot 1 has a total of 19,976.56 square feet with 12,156.56 square feet remaining after ESL is excluded. Lot 2 has 17,856.59 square feet with 7,236.59 square feet remaining after ESL is excluded. Pursuant to Section 322-19B1A of the zoning ordinance, the Planning Board may grant a variance for only up to 50 percent of the maximum permissible yield if the land were deemed not to be environmentally sensitive. The application requires that at least 58 percent of the ESL be included in the minimum lot area. Therefore, this application must first go to the BZA. This application also needs lot width and side yard variances from the Planning Board due to the narrow width of the lots. The applicant is requesting a lot with variance for each lot from 100 feet to 75 feet, and you'll note this is a change from your memo. And side yard variances for each lot from 16-foot minimum, 34-foot total, to 10-foot minimum, 21.26 feet total. Additionally, the subdivision requires a variance from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services for the size of the lots in order to install sanitary systems. This variance is dependent on the ESL variance from the BZA which would determine the yield of this property. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have not yet reviewed this application. However, these comments will be addressed prior to the final approval hearing and does not affect the Planning Board's recommendation to the BZA regarding the ESL land variance. The Planning Department has no objection to the recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, at the final hearing, the Planning Department may suggest additional conditions to protect the environmentally sensitive lands. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby makes a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals to include 18,448 square feet of environmentally sensitive lands, slopes greater than 15 percent, in the minimum lot area within the proposed subdivision known as MAP of Core at Kings Park 1157.
Okay. Just so we could be clear, the operation of the town code on this two-lot subdivision removes from the minimum lot area calculation those lands that are deemed environmentally sensitive? And we are recommending that the zoning Board of Appeals put those, that amount of the property back into the calculation?
In part. There's a step that you missed in that is that the Board, the Planning Board is permitted when reviewing subdivisions to grant a credit of 50 percent of that environmentally sensitive lands. And the applicant has exceeded that
Right.
...standard, and so therefore he must go to the Board of Appeals for that amount above and beyond what this Board can grant.
Right. So if it was 50 percent of the law, we could approve it ourselves, but since it's in excess of 50 percent, we have to recommend to the Board of Appeals what they, what we think they should do with it?
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody present? Thanks. Anybody present on behalf of the applicant?
Good morning. Good afternoon. Good night, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Trumarko. I represent the applicant. I've heard the recommendation of the Planning Department and concur that we must go to the Board of Appeals based upon the present ordinance.
Okay. So you have no objection to the resolution as proposed?
I have no objection.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who's here who wishes to be heard on this application? Please come up and give your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Katie Cardinelli, 207 Core Road in Kings Park. So I'm the next-door neighbor.
Okay.
And I would not like it to be approved. And part of the reason being is that that means there's going to be a new house 15 feet from my bedroom window, 20 feet from my bedroom window. But more than that, it changes the look of the neighborhood, and I invite you to come look at the street. I understand that the lot will be 68 feet wide, but because it's a diagonal road, there is 75 feet. If you're standing there, yes, it's diagonal from the air. It's not that diagonal in person. So these will be very narrow lots where the lots around them are not. We've always welcomed a single-family home to be built on that house. It'll be very nice, a nice addition to the neighborhood. The lot across the street they subdivided and they're building single-family homes over there. But to divide that up into two, I also invite you to come down when it's raining because all of the water in that neighborhood ends up in that lot, in the one that would be closest to 207 on the north side. All of the water from our property, the street, ends up in that lot for the subdivision. So those properties potentially have the, have the potential of having water in their basements if they're putting one, or in their backyards or front yards. I notice basins on the drawings, but they're always going to be there. In addition, the property directly across the street is building three new homes. This would be two more homes. I've already had three cars end up in my draw, in my front yard as they come around the corner on Core Road too fast. I think adding that additional traffic there is a recipe for disaster as well with the school buses. The only sidewalk is on the opposite side of the street. So any families in those houses will have to cross the street to get to the sidewalk because there is no sidewalk on that side. So school buses, the traffic, they're going to end up with cars in their front yard as well.
Now, if you're facing the subject lot on Core Road, is your home to the left or to the right?
It's on the north side, so it'd be on the left.
On the left. And how many feet are there from the, I guess, the south side of your home to the property line, approximately?
We purchased our house in 2007, and if I remember from our survey, and it's only by memory, I believe it was 15 feet.
How many?
I believe it was 15.
And from looking at it, does it appear to be somewhere around 15 feet?
Yeah, about that.
I don't need you to give me the exact number.
But the property line right there where it's 15 feet immediately drops down about seven feet.
Okay.
It's severely sloped right there at the property line.
So to best of your recollection, it's 15 feet, and it looks like it's about 15 feet.
From my house.
From your house to the property line.
Yeah, there's no fence. It's just some trees and that ditch.
Do you know how far they'd be permitted to build? How close to the property line they'll be permitted to build?
I think it's 10 feet, right? According to this?
Well, they're asking for the variance to reduce that to 10 feet.
And on this side where they're asking for the variance, it's indicated there as 11.26 feet. The 10-foot variance would be on the inside between the two new proposed homes. But you can see on the north side of the north home, on the south side of the south home, they're proposing 11.26-foot wide side yards.
And from my understanding, they would have to build a...
And a reduction of total side yards as well.
So how far from her home, assuming it's 15 feet to the property line, how far from her home will they be building?
Approximately 27.
So you're saying it's approximately 12 feet from the north side of the northerly home to that property line?
If the variance is granted for the side yard.
Right. As proposed.
However, I, the Board should take into consideration, the outline of the existing residence is shown on the subdivision that you would have. And as you could see, because of the angle of the road, the actual side yard of this lady would actually not see the house itself because that's in front of their house.
You're saying she wouldn't see that house south of her from the...
Well, she's saying that it's, it's right next to the house. If you look at the, if the outline is, we're assuming that the outline is accurate as the surveyor pointed out here, is the house is actually in front of that because the road is on an angle.
Right. Oh, so you're saying the house would be offset?
It'll be offset. So there is, one of the issues that we are going to bring up with the subdivision is the side yard. I think the, there is an issue with, regardless of where the house is, I think a side yard, this is a rather large side yard reduction for an R15, and that will become a subject of the subdivision and, as well as the protection of the environmentally sensitive lands. But, and I'm not trying to minimize it, but I'm just trying to say that it's, these homes are not next to each other as they typically might be in a straight street.
Could, could we require buffering at all to be maintained between these two on the property, or close to the property line?
Well, I would, it's possible. I think there's a number of things you could possibly do. If you look at it, there's a retaining wall that's right over there. That's where that, and we might take a look at relocating that retaining wall so that it preserves the existing vegetation that's on that particular property much better. I believe this is a heavily wooded lot, and that, I think that would go a long way towards giving the illusion of a larger side yard if we were to consider that. My concern with this particular subdivision is not so much the two homes, but generally speaking, people want to utilize their property, and we have steep slopes in the back, and that's going to become the issue with regard to the subdivision.
The environmentally sensitive land, I assume, runs across the adjacent parcels as well?
Yeah, it's in the back. You could see it where the, it's all in the back here where that node is on the first lot, and you could see it runs in the back there. And, you know, the southern lot has a little bit more play in terms of usability, but the northern lot is very tight. And there's going to be a lot of pressure to utilize that, those steep slopes, and I, my fear is that it's going to really have an alteration, alteration on drainage, natural drainage patterns.
Well, the memorandum indicates that the slopes greater than 15 percent are characterized as steep slopes.
Yes.
Where is that, is that a particularly, a code section where that's written down?
Yes, it's in the code, 15 percent or higher.
Okay. Now, the 15 percent figure, is that the result of some type of a guideline or something that directs what it should be?
Well, the, what happens, and the reason why, 15 percent is chosen by many of the municipalities on Long Island. Because of our geology and the way things work on Long Island where basically clay, sand, most of the areas, once you go beyond 15 percent, you cause a lot of problems. It, once you disturb those particular pieces of property. It's not saying that you can't build on it. It becomes much more complex. And so therefore, it, the 15 percent was always in the town code since the 1950s.
Do you know which other municipalities use the same 15 percent figure?
I could get you the, I'll get you a summary of it because we're actually preparing a summary for one of the town board members.
Because I'm just curious that, you know, it's 15, you know, why isn't it 10 or 20? Is there a reason why it's 15?
Well, the 15 percent is generally considered for Long Island to be the area which, when you disturb vegetation that you'll have, you can't restabilize a slope. That's basically it. But if, this has been discussed a lot, what I could do for the Board, and I'll send it to all the Board, is a discussion on this particular issue because there's, a town board member has also requested previously, and I promised him that I would submit him a report on this showing what the other towns have done and also to the issue of the steep slopes.
I would welcome that to review.
Sure. We have to provide that with the Board.
I'd like to take a look at it. Now, going back to the houses on this particular site...
Before you move on, just one question related to that. Are Brookhaven, Huntington, and Islip, the neighboring towns, all using 15 also?
I believe that they're using it a little bit different than we are, but the answer, short answer is yes, but they have different relaxations, just like we have relaxations. Their relaxations are a little bit different. And they also differentiate between commercial properties and residential properties, and we don't. Okay? But I will provide that information to the, to this Board as well as I will the councilman.
That's great. Now, thank you very much. Now, going back to the site, you said that the houses as proposed to be offset, but that wouldn't change the distance between either home and the property lines, correct? That's just going to, that's going to dictate how far up in the lot they are between the road and the back end.
Do we have the dimensional requirements for R15? What's the side yard requirements? What we are considering right now is a recommendation before the Board of Appeals. When this matter comes back before this Board, we are going to consider the other variances that are requested. And I believe the side yard is an issue because these are narrow lots. And in the R15 zone, the side yard requirements is minimum of 16 feet with a total of 34 feet on both sides. And this lot is showing basically 22 feet. So it's a reduction of both. And so, and the minimum, the maximum size that it has is 12 feet. And I think, you know, from a planner's usual perspective, what we try to do is when these type of lots come in, is we try to get, grant at least the minimum standard that, to the adjacent homeowner. So instead of being 12 feet on that side, I would recommend the minimum requirement, which is 16. And if there's going to be a reduction, it'll be between the two proposed lots so that this would be at least the standard as if we would build a home. What that might mean is, is in this particular case, we're going to have to have a different design house on this particular lot in terms of its, you know, from the width point of view because I think something's going to have to give here, but...
So everything is going to be done to minimize the impact to the surrounding neighbors?
I would recommend, yes. I think the environmentally sensitive lands in the back, counting that as lot area, is not as important as how we place the homes on here because even assuming for the moment that we build one house on this particular property, we would, they're entitled to build within 16 feet of that particular home if they were to build on the northern side. So I would approach, looking at the subdivision, with what that standard is and putting it on at least that side, and the same with the home that goes on the south side to treat them the same. And the applicant, because they have a narrow lot, they have to figure out, basically what the solution to this problem is they're going to have to have an L-shaped house on this property. That's where I'm looking at right now.
All right. Ma'am, have you spoken at all to the neighbor who resides on the south side of the lot about this application?
No. That would be Mary. I just saw, they put up the sign if today is Wednesday, like Friday?
That's all they're entitled?
Yeah. So I haven't had a chance to go and speak to her now. I have two kids.
Have any of the other neighbors on the block expressed any opinion to you one way or the other regarding this application?
I'm, I'm with my kids most of the day. I haven't gone knocking on doors now.
Okay. Well, there's been some comments made here, and is there anybody who wishes to go out and look at this as we've been invited to do before we make a recommendation that we're asked to make?
I think that's a good idea.
I don't know. I've looked at the aerial map. Planning Department has provided us, as well as the tax map. And I think of the 100 parcels on each map, if we were to subdivide this or permit this to be, these would be the narrowest in the whole area. And I don't know if that would be making the community better or, you know, serving any benefit other than, you know, the applicant.
Yeah, well, I mean, looking at the map is one thing, but I, I think...
We're not approving the subdivision tonight, correct?
Right. But we are being asked to make a recommendation of record. So before we do that...
Yeah, I'd be willing to help.
Mr. Demaro, you think it'd be a good idea to go out and look at this? And Mr. Chaves, you do also? I think, I think so too. I like, I think that we're being asked to make a recommendation of record, so I would like the opportunity for whoever wants to go out there to take a look at it.
In the interim, what I'll do is I'll also provide the Board with the 15 percent slope analysis, and we'll also identify the, I'll have one of the staff members identify the steep slopes on here so that you have
Okay.
...a way to evaluate it before, I will try to get it to you before your site inspection.
Okay.
Frank, did I understand you to say that you want to see 16 feet between the northerly building line and the property line you want to see?
Yes.
All right. Because obviously if we do that, it's going to move the two properties closer to the property line between them, the two buildings.
Well, what's going to mean is that you have a, there's a difference between frontage, which is measured on the diagonal as the young lady said, versus the width of the property, which is 68 feet. If you subtracts 16 feet from one side, that leaves you with 52 feet that you would have from there, and you would have to have a side yard on the other side, and let's say you had a minimum of 10 feet on the other side, that leaves you with a 42-foot wide home. Now, 42 feet is, it's not unusual to have a 42-foot wide home, but if you were trying to build a, let's say, a 3,000-square-foot home, you, it's very difficult to do that in 40 feet wide and two stories. So therefore, in order to build that, you would have to have some sort of an L-shaped house in order to have that. And that may be better than trying to stick this house on there. But I do think that it, the, when you fit something into an area, you're first trying to take a look at what's the impact on the adjacent resident. And they should not necessarily have to bear a more substandard side yard than, than, just because it's new construction.
Do you know what the proposed square footage is on these two houses? The print is rather fine.
I, they look like they're about 3,000 square feet. I would...
2,300.
Okay. Is that with the garage?
20, uh, with the garage, yes.
So if you do a 16-foot side yard, you're looking at over 30 feet to this woman's house?
Yes.
Sir, you just mentioned 2,300 square feet. Can you just, for the record, just give us your name and address, please, since your statements are on the record?
Robert Scolfo, 28 Clark Street, Long Beach, New York, on the applicant.
Thank you very much.
S.C.E.L. Ephesian Frank O.
Name was supposed to get some thinking. He had some book on the steep slope standards that we should utilize.
Now, if this is adjourned for an onsite, will it be adjourned to a date certain now or...
Could I ask one more question?
Sure.
You had mentioned a retaining wall. Were you referring to an existing retaining wall?
No, there's one shown on the plans, I believe. That looks like a retaining wall.
And so that would be an additional variance they'd have to apply for?
No. Well, first off, I'm taking, short answer is I don't know because I'm not sure about the size of it because some of this retaining wall comes close to the side yard, and I would like to take a look at that. We're only taking a look at the variance question right now, and that's how we answered this particular one. But this retaining wall, it appears to be too close, at least on one side, to one of the properties, and there may be an issue with regard to that. But that's, that's going to be an engine, mostly an engineering question that I have to seek out first. But what I'm looking towards here is where your house is placed, and I don't know if you've seen a copy of the subdivision.
No, just this one that...
Yes. If you look to see where your house is, that U-shaped item which is directly by your house...
I see.
...that's the retaining wall. And what I think could be done is we could leave a lot of that more buffered around there so that there's more trees on that particular side next to your house and leave that as a protected area. And that way, it will not, your house is actually not going to be side by side. They're going to be offset, but you may not even notice the house that's going to be right next to you. You will see it through the trees, though, but I mean, it will not be as prominent.
Any other questions, ma'am?
No, no, just aside, there are great horned owls that live in that lot.
You want what?
There's great horned owls that live in that lot.
Owls?
Great horned owls. They're like that big. And we always knew someone would build a single-family home. We welcome that very much. And in fact, it was actually listed like that for sale for a very long time. I guess they weren't able to sell it, and they want to, I mean, I know buildings hard these days, but I don't think it's up to us in the town of Smithtown to bail them out and let them build two houses.
All right, thank you. Now, if this is adjourned so we can do an onsite inspection, will that be to a date certain, or be adjourned and put back on the calendar at some future date?
Well, the, it's up to the board. It could be this, the next meeting, we could probably have this done. It'll be up to the board. The Board of Appeals could hear this but cannot act until it receives your report.
All right, so then, is there anybody who wishes to do an onsite inspection on this, who thinks that they will not be able to get there before the next meeting?
It's the next meeting next week?
Next meeting is the week...
No, we can't. I don't think you're going to be able to do a site inspection and get all the reports by next week.
But not in one week, correct?
Yeah, it's going to have to be three weeks.
Will it be the nineteenth, then, the meeting on the nineteenth? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and one other comment. While we're traveling to Kings Park, maybe we could do Jenna Court, which has been pending an onsite at the same time.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this? Anything further from the applicant? Okay, if we're going to do an onsite, we're going to need a motion?
In a matter of number eleven fifty-seven Map of Core at Kings Park, a move that we adjourn for an onsite inspection by the planning board.
And is that application to adjourn to the March nineteenth meeting? Which is, which is the, not the next meeting, but the meeting after the next meeting?
Excuse me, Frank. Shall I make that in the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, adjourned for an onsite inspection by the planning board, and the matter to be brought up at the March nineteenth meeting.
Second, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, none? So adjourned. Ma'am, what's going to happen now, and anybody else in the audience, is the matter has been adjourned to the March nineteenth meeting of this board, which is not the next one, but the one after that. And between now and then, we're going to go out there and take a look at it, so we can get a view for ourselves as to what's there before we make any recommendation to the zoning Board of Appeals, okay?
Can I just ask you your street address?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
No, there was no question.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, next, you have the signing of the performance bond for Larsen Avenue Plant, which you have before you, the adoption of the minutes, the minutes for February fifth, which you have, and then there's two items in correspondence.
Can the performance bond be signed after the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll put that off until after the meeting, rather than hold everybody else up? And we'll go to the next item, which will be adoption of the minutes for November sixth, two thousand thirteen, December fourth, two thousand thirteen, it says fourteen, December eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, it also says fourteen, and January fifteenth, two thousand fourteen. We need a motion on that, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the minutes, items number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen on today's calendar for the four said dates, November sixth, December fourth, December eighteen, and January fifteenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, none? So adopted. And we have a correspondence item?
Is the lady here for that?
I don't believe so. Do they have to make a motion to schedule that in Bel Air, that the town attorney is asking?
Yeah, they, both of those do it.
Mr. Chairman, on both of those items of correspondence, the board is being asked to schedule those for your hearing. The first one is from the town attorney regarding Bel Air Estates. This performance bond, this subdivision was declared in default, and the town attorney has been handling the remaining items. And they're asking the board to schedule this so they can consider a sidewalk waiver and a waiver of certain conditions to allow the subdivision to be completed.
We need to schedule it ourselves, or will that just be scheduled?
We'll take care of it.
Okay.
We just want the board to know. And the second one, I'll let, this was Winston Run, where we have a letter from a resident. This was, if the board recall, last year, the applicant, the developer came in and said that, was asking for a waiver of the street trees and asked that the residents didn't want it. We asked for evidence of that, and we got exactly the opposite. The residents didn't want it. So the, it's been pending. One of the residents are asking that this waiver be brought up. And what, if the board is of a mind to do this, we were waiting for the applicant, because he said he could convince them. It's been a while now. What we could do is tell the applicant we're scheduling it and be here at the next available meeting.
I just have one request. Can you bring the transcript, please, where he made that representation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Remember what day that, what day that was?
We have the date.
I believe it was originally in, a hearing in June.
In June, okay. I think we did it onsite on this one, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's fine if you want to do it that way.
One of the things that we have that, this technology is nice, I'll provide the board with a DVD of all the planning board minutes. You'll have them from nineteen thirty-two. Okay, so, I mean, it's, we have it now, and it's, you know, might as well have them on hand, and it's relatively modest in size. So, but we'll still provide you with the copies.
Just for that one, yeah.
Yeah, but if you needed something for your own records, we'll provide you with a copy of it.
Will we be extending any performance bonds from nineteen thirty-two with three million?
There's a couple that probably are floating around.
Okay, I wouldn't surprise you. It sounds to me at the extent.
We should mention that the one for Winston's Run has expired.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
Now, I see distribution of the minutes. It appears everybody has received a copy of the minutes of the February fifth, two thousand fourteen meeting. Okay, no further items left on the agenda, and then we would need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, none? Meeting is adjourned.